If I want.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 7th, 2023, virtual meeting of the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment. This virtual meeting is held in accordance with NJSA 10:4-12, which is the Open Public Meetings Act. I would like to call this meeting to order. Francisco, are there any sunshine announcements to share?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk on Thursday, November 30th, 2023. We have the notices to be marked.
Okay, this will be B1 in evidence. Meeting.
Okay, can you please take roll call?
So I see Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioners of looking.
Here.
Commissioner Shadine.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Chair Arugio.
Here.
And Chair Coyle.
Here.
The total of six commissioners tonight.
Can we please all stand for the flag salute?
Yes.
I collect your card.
Agents.
To the flag of the United States.
United States of America.
And to the Republic.
To the Republic, which stands.
One nation.
One nation.
A nation under God, indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we please swear in any staff that are in attendance tonight?
Hey, do you all swear or affirm that the testimony or comments you will give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any correspondence, Francisco?
Let me show my screen. You all see that? All right, so this is the December 7th, 2023 zoning board of adjustments meeting. Now, the only items that will be moving forward tonight will be item 13. This is case Z22-107. It is for an appeal with a C variance and the alternative. The address is 68 Wayne Street. The next case will be item 16. This is case Z21-074. This is for preliminary and final major site plan with PD variance. The address is 238 to 247 Street. And lastly, this is the last item we will be hearing tonight. Item number 18, case Z2023-0020. This is for a minor site plan amendment. The address is 74 Bowers Street. All items on the agenda besides those three items will be carried to the January 11th, 2024.
Okay, so our first case is Z22-107. So do we have Stephen Joseph as the attorney on that? Is he present?
Not in Stephen Joseph.
Promote Mr. Joseph.
Hello, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening.
Stephen Joseph for the applicant. Counsel, can we confirm we have notices, please?
Yes, Stephen, you did notice. We have your affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication. So Bridget will mark that as A1 for this application.
In one moment, this is A1 in evidence for this application. Okay.
All right, wonderful, thank you. So 68 Wayne Street, this is a, this is an appeal of the determination of a city administrative officer that access to existing parking lot was abandoned. The applicant feels that the determination doesn't make a lot of sense. That's the reason for our appeal. The, the use was determined to be legal, legal existing use. And the applicant feels that you can't, you can't have a use such as this, a legal use without access to it. It would be like saying you could have a house, but you can't have any doors or. So what we're asking for as part of the, the appeal portion of this is to have that, have the administrative officers' decision overturned and permit us to use the, the access on the site. In the alternative, because it, it is sometimes harsh to overrule an administrative officer, the applicant is also attached a C variance to the application. Sometimes less harsh to grant a C variance and the board can control that better. And the board can attach conditions to the C variances where they can't to appeals. So the applicant's plan for the site is to eventually develop it, but right now it's going to be used for parking. Specifically, the, the local mosque and the Barrow House have expressed interest in renting parking spaces there. Applicant then plans to develop the site down the road. The applicant would also be open to a condition, putting a time limit restriction on the use of the site for approximately three years. You have all the papers on the record. There's a series of emails with the administrative officer confirming that the use is, is legal. And, and we don't have any experts this evening. We feel everything's on the, on the papers.
Okay, so you have no experts. Is there anyone from the public looking to make comments, Francisco?
Yes, there are quite a few hands that just raised. I will promote Helena Chen.
Hi, would you raise your right hand to be sworn, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please state and spell your full name for the record.
Sure, Helena Chen, first name is H E L E N A, last name is C H E N, and I am a resident at 67 Wayne, which is directly across the street from 68 Wayne for the last nine years and change. So as far as the attorney representing 68 Wayne, his metaphor as far as having a house without a door, that's incorrect. That door has existed for its use as a parking lot for the last nine years. That door just happened to be an entrance on Columbus, which I bought my home, my current residence at 67 Wayne, knowing that and having no issues with that. As far as using it with a, you know, the, the curb cut they're suggesting, that's not something I anticipated or would want in this neighborhood because it would take up several parking spaces that would, you know, be necessary and also would cause additional congestion. And as far as needing parking spaces for the Barrow House or the mosque in the neighborhood, within a quarter to half a mile, there are over a dozen public parking, parking lots, uh, street parking, all options that are available to me or any member of the public. So as far as needing additional parking lots, I'm not, I'm not able to understand why that's necessary.
Okay, thank you. Francisco, anyone else out there?
Promoting Erin Morrill. And if there is anyone else in the public who does wish to speak, please raise your hand at this time.
Would you raise your right hand? Thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and please state and spell your full name for the record.
My name is Aaron Morrill, that's A A R O N, last name Morrill, M O R R I L L.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I would adopt everything Helena just said from across the street. I would add that I live right next to this proposed parking lot. I've lived here since 2009. It was, as Helena said, a parking lot with an entrance on Christopher Columbus, which made a huge difference and is very different than what the applicant is proposing. I will say that since we have lived here, we have looked forward to the day that we would no longer have a parking lot next to us. We've had automobiles literally bang into the side of our building. I've had the entire building shake. We've had rats, we've had garbage, and it's been a nightmare living next to a parking lot. It, I understand that it was permitted at the time because of the history, but that parking lot is now gone and that entrance on Christopher Columbus is, is now gone. The use is not a permitted use, from what I understand, for historic neighborhood. It is opposed, the use of this space as a, of this lot, as a parking lot, is opposed by virtually everybody in the neighborhood. We don't want it, we don't think it's necessary. As Helena said, there are other parking lots nearby. There are numerous mass transit options for anybody that wants to come downtown from another part. There's the PATH train, there are buses, there's a taxi stand. This is not a needed amenity by any stretch. I would add that I actually had to sue the last owner of the parking lot because of the problems we had living next to a parking lot. It has been, I understand the policy of the city to try and promote mass transit.
One minute to go.
This will not be consistent with the city's policy of promoting mass transit. And for all of these reasons, I, you know, I, I, I can't stress how opposed we are in this neighborhood to this and how opposed I am specifically and my wife. Thank you.
Promoting Jennifer.
Hi, raise your right hand to be sworn. Thank you, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and please state and spell your full name for the record.
Sure, it's Jennifer Newman, and that's J E N N I F E R. Last name is Newman, N E U M A N N.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I agree with both Helena and Aaron as well, and we live at 69 Wayne Street. So also across the street from the proposed parking lot, cutouts, entrance, exit. Aside from the things that we've already mentioned, and I don't want to be repetitive and take up more of your time, I feel that because that lot entrance and exit that they're wanting to do on Wayne Street was abandoned over 25 years ago. And then this neighborhood was a historic neighborhood. I can't imagine why they would want to open that up again and cause additional traffic and the possible danger where we already deal with folks that blow through stop signs. We do have Newark Avenue over here, so we do get visitors for restaurants, which is great. And they park in the parking garages, so I can't imagine why they would need to come down a residential street or pull out of a parking lot on a residential street where there are homes and children. And we would just be fighting additional traffic and possible dangers thereof. And again, I think that we've been going through this quite a few times now, and we continue to mention the same items and we keep hearing more and more reasons why this was allowed previously, except that, again Helena mentioned, the exit and entrance was on Columbus, it was not on Wayne, and that would be a problem for us. So we are opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting the Van Vors Neighborhood Association.
Hi, can you see me? Oh, you know, I'm sorry. I am actually, there we go.
There we go.
I shouldn't be under Van Vors. I should be under myself.
Sworn, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and please state and spell your full name for the record.
Sure, my full name is Cecilia, C E C I L I A, last name Deleon, D E L E O N. I am the co-chair of the Planning and Development Committee for the Van Vors Neighborhood Association. I didn't realize I logged in under their email instead of mine. I am also a longtime resident of Jersey City over 25 years going on. I'm a licensed architect and also a certified zoning officer at this point. Couple of things to say, I'm just going to read it and make it easier. As I understand this application, the previous owner of these sites has also owned the large parcels behind it. The larger lot is totally within the Columbus Corner RDP, and these two lots on Wayne are in the Van Vors Park Historic District. Since these lots are contiguous and were owned by the same entity, the entire area was being used as valet parking access solely from Columbus Drive. The curb cuts along Wayne were never used as access, and there was never any intent to use them as access. I did a little research and looked at the historic photos available on Google Maps. I have them here, I know you can't see them, but you could always look them up. Or I could share my screen, however, but if you go back to the photos in 2007, there's two giant trees right where they're opening, where they're proposing the curb cut essentially, or the, the gate. And as you go through the state, you could see sometime in before 2012, the chain link fence was redone. It was kind of put, put back in line with the, with the facades on the, the historic facades, and a smaller historically appropriate fence was put in, in front of that. I think I was on the historic board back then, I think that was a condition of approval in order to get the chain link fence up. Then back in, I think it was 2020, these lots were eventually sold. That little fence stayed up up until then. And then 2020, the lots were sold. But clearly it was the previous owner's intent to abandon the parking lot for these two parcels as there's no independent drive access. That little fence had no gates, nothing for a car to go through. So obviously the previous owners were abandoning that use off of Wayne. In some, after this applicant owned the parcels, the curb cuts in the sidewalk were reconstructed and the shorter historic fence was removed.
I'm sorry, and the shorter what fence? I'm sneezing as you're.
The shorter, the his, shorter historic fence was removed. Was taken down. I'm not sure if, if this was done, I mean, the curb cuts were redone. Things like, I'm not sure if that was done with or without permits. Also, then on July 19th, 2021, the head of the HE DC issued a letter to the applicant stating that a use variance would be required and that they had 20 days to appeal this determination. Since it's now 2023, I would think that time has expired. On this opportunity to appeal, I'd like to know how appeal could be brought up two years later, essentially, when they only had 20 days. I do agree that this application requires a D1 use variance for allowing a parking lot as a principal use in the Van Vors Park Historic District. So it's unclear to me why this applicant is also requesting a C variance. Even if, for some unknown reason, this board decides that a parking lot use can continue, even though the planning office said it would be, it would require D1 variance, an application for the curb cut would still be a D2 variance as an expansion of that use. It's not a C variance. There's no benefit to the public, allowing a private parking lot in the historic district. There are, however, many detriments. Increased traffic and congestion, increased noise, loss of publicly accessible parking spaces, 100% lot coverage with no drainage in an area prone to flooding, ultimately introducing surface level parking into a well-established historic district is contrary to the goals of the master plan where overall the use of cars is being discouraged. This application should be denied, be denied. Sorry.
Your three minutes is over.
Okay. Also, as I'm a stickler for a drawing, for the drawings, the drawings submitted don't show curb cuts. This application prefers a curb cut and they don't show any.
Okay, thank you.
Voting Allison Navarro.
I should say, I, I miss, I, I did not say that you have three minutes to speak and Ahmed will be the timekeeper.
Thank you.
Okay, raise your right hand, please, to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and please state and spell your full name for the record.
Allison Navarro, A L Y S O N. Last name N A V A R R O.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time. I'm a longtime resident of Jersey City, I've been here for 25 years. The last 20 years, I've lived at 58 Wayne Street, which is on the same side of the street as the proposed curb cut. During those 20 years, that has never been used as a driveway. So 24 years, I'd be interested here if there was a date that it was presumably used as a driveway. When we moved in, there was a proposal for Columbus Corners that showed a parking garage potentially opening at that area, and we were prepared to fight that as well, even back then. My family has observed all the events that Cecilia listed, the change in fence. I also have pictures on my phone that I could share if it was interesting of the day they arrived to taper the curb so that it looked like it was a driveway. I, it is a historic district and this is a residential historic street, and we comply with historic standards that are intended to add value to our properties. And they, they are as detailed as the shadows of our window panes. And so it seems to me that historic precedent that we are held to, the tax records from 1930, should also be of consideration here. It shows two homes with cast iron porches, if I'm not mistaken, in those two lots at that time. So definitely not a parking lot. And the last point I want to make is that that, that area of the parking lot, even when it has been a much larger parking lot, has been particularly dangerous because it faces a quieter residential street. We have seen graffiti on the buildings that, that are adjacent to it on both sides that the owners then have to deal with. And we've also had fireworks shot during the pandemic from those locations because it's dark, because it's quiet, aimed at the houses across the street and over their roofs. I have video of that as well, if that would be something you would like forwarded to the council. Those are the four pit, four points that I wanted to make. It's never been done in 20 years. All events that Cecilia mentioned were observed by my family and I have some.
One minute to go.
Historic standards should apply, and it's a particularly bad area of that parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Eric Speck. And there are currently two more hands that are raised.
Hi.
Raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and please state and spell your name for the record.
Eric Speck, E R I C S P E C K.
Thank you.
I don't really have anything prepared, I'm just going to riff on some of the themes that were brought up today, all of which are correct and I agree with from my neighbors. I've lived on Wayne Street since 2008, and I've also experienced living near a parking lot elsewhere, and it is never good for the community. It's true that there's graffiti, it's true that there's noise, it's true that there's litter, it's true that there's congestion. It's clearly an inhibitor to any sort of affluence and development in our community. And as you can see, everybody on our block completely opposes this. In fact, I know others who couldn't join, who couldn't make the call today, also oppose it. I really want that to be considered, that if this were to happen, it would be in direct opposition to the majority of the community. Not only that, what was said about historic standards is true. We've, everyone on our block has abided by those rules, much to our chagrin often, and had to spend money to abide by those rules. And it is appropriate that anyone, you know, who has property on that block should do the same, and a parking lot doesn't meet those standards. And lastly, you know, I also think it should be considered that the owner of this parking lot, it's too often that they don't suffer the consequences of their own facilities and everything I just mentioned before, the, the noise, the, the dirtiness, the, the graffiti, the congestion, you know, this is not going to be suffered by the owner, it'll be suffered by us, the community. And so for that reason, for those reasons, I vehemently oppose this as well. Thank you.
Promoting the next attending.
Hello, raise your right hand to be sworn, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please state and spell your full name.
Yeah, my name is Shreyas Prasad, first name is spelled S H R E Y A S, last name is spelled P R A S A D. And I live at 57 Wayne Street.
I'm gonna have to swear her in if she continues talking, okay? Just kidding.
Yeah, so I've, as I said, I live at 57 Wayne Street. I've owned the house for about three years now. Lived in Jersey City for about five years. And I don't have much more to add beyond what Erin, Helena, Jennifer, Cecilia, Allison, and Eric just mentioned. But I just wanted to state for the record that I'm also opposed to the use of the property as a parking lot. I, I firmly believe permitting the lot would be a net negative on the street from a traffic perspect, traffic perspective, and really inconsistent with the historical nature of the neighborhood. And yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
And promoting the last attendee.
Raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please state and spell your full name for the record.
Name is Jeff Harvey, J E F F, last name Harvey, H A R V as in Victor, E Y.
Thank you.
I thank you, and thank you for taking the opportunity to speak. This will be quick. Everything that everybody else before me has said, I, I completely agree with. I think the purpose of me speaking is just to reiterate the opposition and, and and the fact that from a neighborhood perspective, there is no benefit here, and there are many other folks who could not join this evening that, that feel the same way. And so from my perspective, I would just encourage and request that, that this be noted. And that's it, thank you very much.
And there are no other hands that are raised.
Okay, if we have no other comments, then we can close out the public portion of the meeting. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions?
My only question is, when I wrote it, they said to, to help the community center visitors. Where is this community center? And not one person said about the community center.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, in the, I'm looking at the, you know, in the, the form here, and it says, insulation of electric gate to permit community center visitors to access the parking lot. So who are the community center visitors that you're doing this for?
Oh, the, the, the mosque. My client's been in discussions with the mosque. Oh, the, the, the mosque. Uh, my client's been in discussions with the mosque to arrange for parking.
So they, they, they need parking for the mosque. So where are they parking now? Are they parking on their street?
I think wherever they can find, I think wherever they can find parking.
So basically what's happening, just another question, the people who are worried about losing parking don't have parking anyway if all the mosque people are there, correct?
I, I, I don't want to, you know, testify, I'm just an attorney, but I would, I would assume, I would assume so. I, I, I do also, I, I do also want to say, you know, a lot of what the board heard from the public is that they don't want a parking lot here. Um, and that's not really the, the question, right? The, the administrative officer determined that the, the parking lot is a, it's illegal use on the site. Um, we're not here asking for permission to have a parking lot. We, we have a parking lot.
Right.
And, and the applicant's position is that i- if we don't have access to that parking lot, you're taking away our use, right? It does, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. Um, that, that's what this application's about. And, and the only reason why a C variance was requested is to give the board a little more flexibility in, in controlling the use. But, or the primary part of the application is, is the appeal, that the, the determination doesn't make sense to the applicant because can't use the property as it's legally permitted to be used without the access.
Um, I have a question. Um, are these cars, I saw, I, I went on Google, so I saw the cars, are they there permanently? Or is this is an ongoing in and out parking lot?
So a, a violation was issued and there's currently a municipal court hearing pending. Um, so in lieu of that, and, and because we have a, you know, a timely appeal filed, all cars were removed from the site as to not incur any further fines.
So right now it's just like, it's just empty?
Co- correct, but that was only done because this appeal is pending and because there's a municipal hearing pending.
I see.
I have two questions. Um, why is the entrance being moved from Columbus to Wayne? And why was the first appeal that had a thirty-day timeframe in order to make the appeal not, not met?
So, so the, the appeal was timely filed. There was a, a, a letter issued by Anisia, and then there was a series of emails that clarified and clarified the position in the letter, and the appeal was, was filed in a, in a timely matter. It did take us quite some time to get to this point. Um, partially because when, when we added the C variance in the alternative, that triggered a historic preservation commission here. Um, so the appeal would not require historic preservation commission, C variance would. Um, so in order to get proper jurisdiction, we needed to go through that process as well. So it, it did take us some time to get here, but an appeal was, was timely uh filed from the uh, the original letter was July nineteen twenty twenty-one. Um, and as far as access uh from Columbus, uh, that's a separate piece of property. This, there's technically three separate lots here, uh, sixty-six and sixty-eight Wayne is, is on Wayne Street, arguably those they merged uh just as a matter of law, but the parcel on Columbus is a totally separate parcel with a separate owner. And that's, I think, currently being developed with the building.
So are you saying that there's uh no access or will be no access to that lot from Columbus because of the development?
That's correct.
Okay, but this area is not zoned for this parking lot, and I'm listening to the individuals speaking, and they're saying they're abiding by the rules of the Historic Neighborhood Association, but this, your, your client doesn't want to abide by it by putting a parking lot there and you're asking us to change that and give them that ability.
We're not, we're not putting a park, the parking lot's already there, right? That, that was the determination that was made, that that's a, a legal use that's currently existing. Um, so we're not asking for, for a parking lot. Parking lot's already there.
This is about the gate and access.
Yeah, we're just, we're asking the board.
Last speaker, please.
Sorry, Bridget.
Go ahead.
Uh, so we're, yeah, we're just asking the board to recognize that we, we can't have the use without wi- with, without the act, without the access.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh, you mentioned there's a cut curb on Wayne Street. For that bar?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
You, you mentioned that there is a cut curb, an entrance from Wayne Street. That, that's true.
So there, there are, I believe, two curb cuts on, on Wayne Street, and there was a gate there. Right? And I, and I think, I, I think what the community is saying and what the, what some of the city's position is, is that there, there was also uh an iron gate um that was, you know, potentially blocking that access. Right? So I, I think, I think the other side of this, right, to play devil's advocate here, is that they, the city is saying that that iron, that iron gate's stopping us from using the site. Uh, but at the same time, the city's also saying that we're allowed to use the site for parking.
So what was the, it was denied, why? Can you clarify that again or, or say that? Why was it denied in the first place? Because of the. Now.
So, um, I could read from the email. I'm sure Tanya could also summarize if she wants to, but it might be better if I just read from the, from the.
Hey, I, I was gonna mark it into the, as a, you can share, even if you weren't, um, anyway, it might be easier.
Uh, yeah, so we can enter this.
It's on the.
Yeah, it, it's on, it's on the, it's on the portal, um, but there was a, a, a letter issued, and the position that, that Anisia took in the letter is that the, the use i- is legal and permitted. But because of the landscaping uh and the iron fence that was in place um during portions of the prior ownership, that the, the curb cut and the access is no longer permitted. Right? And that, that inconsistency, what the applicant feels is, is the inconsistency, the, the legal use and the lack of access is the nature of the appeal. That's, that's why we're here. We're asking the board to reconcile that.
But wait, wait, let, let's, let me just try to get this into perspective for a moment.
True.
I, I'm reading Anisa's letter of July twenty twenty-one. She said that the use was abandoned. Now, did you appeal that within twenty days?
We did appeal that within.
Is that on the portal? I don't see your notice of appeal somewhere. It's here?
Um, we did submit, uh, we, we, we did submit within, within the twenty days. We, we did file within twenty days. I'm sure I could find uh the email where we sent it out, but.
But you, you need more than an email, don't you need a, don't you need the application of some sort? I don't know, Tanya, but i- is there a notice of appeal of, of uh Anisa's uh denial? I mean, she's saying that this was abandoned.
Right.
So she's saying it's abandoned, so th- there's two things here. You want us to overturn that.
Right.
Based on what? Nothing.
Well, so.
But then the second thing is, so you said, okay, let's, let's, let's uh, let's cover our bases, let's hedge our bets, I guess is the right way to say it. And let's go to historic and get a C variance, and historic denies that eight-nothing. So you're here for that appeal as well. Is that what we're doing? So two appeals, what, one is from.
Vinnie, it's not an appeal of the historic denial. Historic denial is the recommendation to the zone.
Right. I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, excuse me. Well, it came here for that. Now we're reviewing it based on historic's denial. So that's the two issues that are before us.
True.
Do we, do we reverse Anisia that, who, who wrote something over two years ago with, when we don't even, at least I don't see a notice of appeal of that. Well, let's put that to the aside. Now we have a, your application for a C variance in historic, which historic recommends that we deny it eight-nothing.
I, I did just want to clarify that, that Anisia withdrew her position in that letter.
Oh, I know. Is there another letter on the portal? I didn't see.
There's a ser- there's a series of emails on, on the portal from Anisia that changes, changes her position in that letter. That it's not, it's not a use variance. She's not saying the use is not permitted. She's saying the curb cut's not permitted.
I, I don't see that. Uh, uh, at least on what, what uh, what's on the, the, you know, the
So.
Agenda here somewhere. Sorry, Cole, go ahead.
So if the curb cut's not permitted, at least according to her, then how can anything else proceed?
Right.
Exactly.
Correct.
I mean, I'm kind of like, like, it's kind of weird here in the sense that, I mean, and I really don't know how this becomes a functional parking lot without a curb cut. And if she's saying no curb cut, then we still don't have her stuff, right, that we could look at? Like her letter in writing, so I don't even, I feel like there's a piece of evidence missing here.
Right. And I feel to
It's on.
And overturn this without that floor that we need.
It's on, so the, the series of emails is on the portal, and it, it is the position of the city that the parking lot is illegal use. So, so.
Curb cut is not.
Legal, the parking lot is a legal, is a legal use.
But the curb cut is, is the problem.
Cor- correct, and that, and that's why we're, that's exactly why we're appealing. Because a legal, we don't feel a legal use can be taken away for that reason.
But, but.
You can't say the use is, is, is legal. You can't say that use is allowed to be there and then say you can't access it.
No.
But, but the, the people knew this when they were purchasing the property, that putting a curb cut in was probably illegal. And now they want us to overturn that. Or give you, or grant you a variance to do this.
It, it was a functional parking lot at the time. Um, and, and, and uh, uh, counsel, I'm also looking at the city's intake log, which does show the appeal was filed uh in, in a timely manner on, on the, on the city's website.
I, I think we're, we're looking at two different things. I mean, I'm looking at what's on the case file when you open up the calendar. You're looking at something totally different, which we don't have access to and it's not in front of us. I don't think. All that I have in front of me is, is Anisa's letter of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, saying that this use was abandoned. Now you're saying there's something other than that. If you could show it to me on what's under this case jacket number, Z twenty-two dash one oh seven. If you could show it to me on this, I don't see it.
No, it, it doesn't look like it's on the portal.
No.
Okay. Though, those materials were, were supposed to be on the portal and they are, I, I think, very important to the case. You know, I, I, I would ask that the, I, I, I would ask that the board not make a decision without reviewing those materials, because they are, they're, give a great amount of context. Um, their, their emails.
That's what I was gonna suggest.
Yeah, I don't think we can, Stephen. I don't want to, you know, postpone things, but by the same token, I don't see what you're talking about. And neither do the Commissioners. And so, maybe what you're talking about is gonna change the, you know, change the facts, change the law, you know, that expression.
No, under, understood, yeah, and I do, I do apologize. I didn't, I didn't realize, I, you know, I've, I've been making a lot of statements and saying a lot of things that clearly the board doesn't have uh context or, or reference to, so I do apologize about that. So, y- you know, this um will go into the new year, um, and, and we are gonna have to renotice for that, so it'll be a date um that I'll, I'll coordinate with, with staff. I believe.
Any, so. What do you think?
I, I saw, I'm looking over those emails now. I mean, the emails definitely show that there was a timely appeal that was filed, and it was, the emails were asking for clarification. I, I, I'm not gonna speak about something that's not on the portal. Um, but I am familiar enough with this case that I know what Mr. Joseph is talking about.
Uh huh.
And I, I mean, I can, I can go through a number of things with you, the timeline, I think some relevant um legal review on this, um, or we can wait for the letter. I I'm happy to do either. I think that there's a lot of confusion, so if I could at least, I think, provide some clarity as to kind of the, the timeline and what's happening, that might just be helpful, I think, to orient Commissioners.
Okay, I, I'm in agreement with that, but I would rather have in front of me, not now, I mean, I'll listen to what you have to present for us, Tanya. But I would like to have these papers in front of me to be able to read them and come to my own decision based on, you know, all of this tonight.
Or, I saw.
Yeah, I agree with Catherine.
Me too.
I don't know if we want to spend more time on this.
Can we table this for another time or what?
Uh, can we vote on the, hold on the case?
No.
Don't we vote on what?
He wants to know if we want to vote on this. Do you want us to vote on this tonight or withdraw it? What do you want to do table?
No, we can, we can, we can vote on hold in the case until you get all the documentation.
Well, he'll be tabling it, right?
Yeah, you can table it. We can table it. For another day. Mr. Joseph.
There's a lot of.
Person meeting.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's the best thing to do at this point, so we, we can table, table the case, um, and then we'll see everybody next year.
Okay.
Well, the question for you, Mr. Joseph, is this, uh, if, so we're gonna carry it. But the question is, do you want to renotice? Or do you want to?
I, I prefer the renotice going into a new year, especially since we're gonna be in person this year, so I, I would I, I, I think it's better to renotice.
Well, you have a lot of public that's interested in this, so that's probably the safest course of action.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that, but I didn't know what you were talking about by looking.
No, I, I, I apologize. I, I, yeah, I, I apologize.
No, I wasn't using.
Okay, so we'll just adjourn this without a date.
Right.
Uh, and you'll renotice. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Welcome holiday.
Yeah. Okay, our next case is uh Z twenty four, uh, two thirty-eight dash two forty-seventh street, and I think Charles Harrington is, needs to be promoted.
Hello?
Don't see.
Yeah.
I don't see Chuck.
Charles.
Francisco, I see he had case number fifteen. So he adjourned that and not sixteen? Yeah, let me just make sure. Yeah, does it? Let's.
Hmm.
In a second. So, yeah.
On to eighteen.
The email that he sent me, he said that they were just carrying the uh two of his items, so I figured. So if he's not here, I guess we should.
Do we go to eighteen right away?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so move forward. I get, okay, so let's um look at case Z two zero two three dash zero zero uh two zero, it's seventy-four Bowers Street, and uh Stephen Joseph is the attorney.
He's here.
Okay.
All right, hello, everyone again. Um, Jeff Lewis is our architect, if we could go ahead and get him uh promoted. Um, so this is an amendment to a minor site plan that was previously approved um by this board. Uh, there was a, a, a portion of the structure um that was supposed to be remaining on the site uh after some exploratory demolition was completed, uh it was found that there's, there were no real footings or foundation, um, and the building was not structurally sound. So a portion is, there's a note being changed on the plan essentially saying that there's a, a new portion of the structure, rather than a structure to be structured to remain.
Rather than a structure, what?
I'm sorry, rather than a structure to remain and be repaired.
Thank you.
Um, all that will make a lot more context uh once we get Jeff up here. There he is. Okay, let's just give him a minute to start his video. There we go, let's get Jeff sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to given this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Great, and state and spell your full name for the record?
Uh, Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I S.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, uh, Jeff, why don't you share your screen, let's show the plans, and I think we could pretty quickly explain what's going on.
Sure, can I just, uh, should I first, for the record, uh, my license is in good standing and active in the state of New Jersey?
Sure, fine. And we recognize.
Thank you.
We know.
Uh, and actually, it's, uh, someone has to let me share my screen?
Give me a second.
Francisco.
Sure.
Francisco, are you there?
Yeah.
Oh, we're good. Okay, I'm good now. Okay, so Stephen, could you just let me know when it actually comes up?
Yeah, sometimes a delay. Uh, not yet.
Why?
There we go. We can see you now.
Okay. Okay, great, so seventy-four Bowers, uh, we are talking about, um, the back half of the building. So the front half of the building was an existing three-story building. And then the back half of the building was an existing one-story garage. Uh, we were hoping to keep the back walls that included this back wall here. Uh, this wall on the side and the front wall, all the one-story garage walls, however, as Stephen mentioned, uh, upon demolition, uh, we discovered that the walls were old, um, old concrete block walls that weren't structurally sound, they were on just these kind of rock rubble footings that were not very deep and were not structurally sound as well. Um, so the only change that we're making in this application is taking what was a proposed, uh, wall to remain and be reused, and, uh, we're demolishing that wall instead building a new eight-inch block wall along all three of these property lines. Um, that is the extent of the change, the, the bulk layout stays the same. Uh, this wall along the back property line will be finished, uh, with a, um, stu- smooth stucco finish painted gray like we usually do on block walls along the property line. Uh, and as I mentioned, the bulk of the building remains exactly the same, it's just the change of uh, using the existing, uh, first floor walls to, um, using new walls instead. Anything else I need to say directly, Stephen, or does that cover it?
Uh, I, I think, I think that's it. Yeah, there, there's, I believe, one of the conditions of the resolution of approval is that uh, any changes, even minor ones, have to come back to the board, so that's, that's why we're here.
All right, is there anyone in the pub, out in the public, Francisco, that's looking to make a comment on this?
I do see one hand raised promoting Janke.
I raise your hand, swan please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to given this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Then state and spell your full name for the record.
My full name is Janke Vias, and it's spelled J A N as in Nancy, K I. Last name, V, as in Victor, Y A S as in Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, I, I guess, should I just start speaking?
Yes.
So, um, my, um, uncle and my dad, my, my dad owns the property next door, seventy-two Bowers Street, I was here in May, actually from January to May, um, as it kept getting delayed, but, um, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that we were not notified of this change or, um, there was no communication, and, uh, when we, when I presented as a licensed architect and as a witness, I did mention that, um, that all of those walls were not structurally stable and they had every intention of removing all of these walls and no plan for, um, coordinating any of that, there is an elevation change, uh, a big portion of the back end of our property is supported by the wall and the current demolition, I was just there two weeks ago, uh, the current demolition that has been done has been done haphazardly and the wall that is retaining our backyard is not shored, it's not structurally sound, I'm not a structural engineer, so I can't speak to that, but they also haven't brought in a structural engineer or coordinated with us how they're going to maintain the structural stability of our backyard. So, um, that is something that I would, um, expect that they respect, uh, for our backyard, and, uh, I would not approve this amendment without uh, the required shoring and bracing that would be required. And without seeing the plans that they propose. Because they're gonna be digging a foundation now, which is gonna further undermine the stability of our backyard.
Uh, okay.
Okay, is, is there anyone else, um, in the public to make any comments, Francisco, asking to speak?
This time, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, then we'll close out the public portion, are there any commissioners who have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I, like, I have a question, so there, the, the young lady is referring to the backyard and the fence, I remember seeing pictures of the backyard, what really isn't in use. Um, if I'm correct, I don't think they were using the backyard at that time. Um, how is that fence, how is that backyard, the, the, the the wall that she's referring to, are you shoring it up, what are you doing to, to, to correct that?
Uh, so I, I could let, I could let Jeff speak to that, it, it, I mean, nothing in the plan that was approved is changing it except for, um, the change that, that Jeff said. And one of the arguments at, at the original hearing that was, that was made by individuals, that we needed a full set of civil plans with all sorts of engineering drawings, but that I, 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 I mean, the, the application was approved and this application doesn't require that level of, of drawings and materials, because it's, it's a minor site plan major. Um, of course, there's construction drawings.
I'm sorry, my, my question was to Mr. Lewis. Um, what are you planning to do to shore up that fence, that backyard?
Sure, um, so I think she's talking, she, I know they have their, um, what I guess used to be a garage or a shed or, or some sort of masonry building in their backyard, that's, that's near the property line, but not on the property line. Um, when we do remove it, the, the contractor is of course responsible for making sure that that our work does not negatively affect any work on the property next door, so they, there will be measures that the city requires that they will have to, um, they will have to abide by, for sure. That's generally not drawings that I would do, but that's something that the contractor is required to do. That's for all construction on the property line, that's, that's a pretty typical case.
And the other commissioners have any comments? Okay, can we hear from Tanya?
Yep, um, the only reason that this application is here is because the original approval, um, was intended to keep the rear yard garage, just so you guys all have, um, a memory of, uh, what, at least, at least what we're talking about.
Yep.
Okay, so. Um, this is about, this is the Bower side, it is a corner property. Um, they are, uh, proposing again, just to renovate that, um, and they're proposing to keep this and to add on to it. Um, the, the structure is already demolished and resolution pretty clear, as with every single one of our resolutions and every single one of our approvals, you must follow that approval to the letter of the law, and if you do not, um, you can be issued a violation and or um, not issued a CO, so we are in the process of the, uh, construction, the, the structure is already demolished, it's better to be here at this point than it to be, than to be later when someone's seeking a CO. Um, but that is primarily the reason that they are here, there was the intention to keep those garages, those garages were, uh, found to be unstable, they did remove them. And so they do need permission from this board to deviate from the original proof plans.
And, and the structure will look exactly as it was, we're just deviating because everything, it needs to be replaced because everything was kind of rotting out, that's what we're voting on tonight. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, um, I'm asking for a motion from one, from a commissioner to approve, um.
I motion, I'm sorry. I motion to.
I'm sorry, go ahead, so, yeah. Go ahead.
I motion to approve Z twenty twenty-three zero, zero twenty, seventy-four Bowers Street. Um, with a with said variances, what is that, with the, um, yeah, with the said variances.
Okay, can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, Francisco, can you take a vote?
On a motion to approve, Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabluky?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arul?
Yes.
And Chair Coyle?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries all in favor.
Aye.
Thank, thank you, everybody, have a good evening, and I, uh, very much look forward to seeing everybody in person next year.
Yeah, thank you.
Right.
Take care.
Thank you, have a good holiday.
You too.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May, maybe it's best if we, um, approve the calendar? Because we're gonna have to postpone, uh, carry these cases
Okay.
to the next calendar, so let's, why don't we do the calendar first?
Okay.
Then Francisco and Tanya can tell us if we're gonna adjourn these, these cases to January eleventh or the twenty-fifth, whatever.
So, so we're not going to be hearing Z twenty-one dash zero seven four.
Oh, Chuck Harrington is. I'm sorry, but I, Francisco, did Chuck respond?
No, he hasn't, I don't see him either, um, but I was gonna say we also should approve the board contract, uh, the board attorney contract and also the position.
Yeah, we're gonna do all that, but I, I thought first we should do is just clear up the agenda.
Yeah, let me.
Carry everything in case there's public listening, so we know where we're carrying it to.
Yes.
Just so we're clear, uh, we did, we did have, uh, Francisco, you did send all of us a calendar?
Yes.
Uh, for the, for proposed calendar for twenty twenty-four, is everybody review it, we have any problems with it? We could just pass it as is?
Yes, well, as far as I'm concerned, yes.
Me too. It's okay with me?
Okay.
We'll have a motion to approve the calendar that was sent out for twenty twenty-four? Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, there goes that now, so now we have a calendar. And so let's start. We, we had, uh, basically, we're adjourning most of this calendar, so.
Yeah.
First case, uh, and the sec, eleven and twelve, case Z twenty dash zero one nine, Z twenty dash zero two zero, that, the both, uh, concerns sixty-four dash sixty-eight Harmon Street and four thirteen, four nineteen Arlington Avenue. So that case was already carried from November ninth to today with a preservation of notice. So does it, Francisco, do you know what, uh, we'll carry this again with a preservation of notice, but do you know when it is, do you have a preference?
I believe they said January eleventh, which is our first meeting of the year.
Okay, so we'll carry that to January eleventh, now that, that, that's another issue right now, but, uh, some attorneys are going to wanna renotice, just to be a hundred percent sure. But I, I don't see why we just can't carry it with a preservation of notices, of what, some of the attorneys think it's safer to renotice, that's up to them, but right now, we're going to carry this to January eleventh with a preservation notice, right? Uh, we already discussed, uh, number thirteen, so Mr. Joseph is gonna renotice for that case, sixty-eight Wayne Street. And that leaves, uh, case Z twenty-two dash zero eight nine, which is one twenty-eight Glenwood Avenue. I had spoken to Mr. Wine about that, that case was carried from November ninth to tonight. And we're gonna carry that again to when, Francisco, the eleventh or the twenty-fifth? The eleventh. So that case will be carried to the eleventh with a preservation of notice. Um, and again, the only difference now is that, uh, this is gonna be in person, right, on the eleventh?
Yes.
Similarly, Z twenty da, uh, which is Z twenty dash one oh two, that's one twenty-nine Linden Avenue. That was carried from November ninth to tonight with a preservation of notice. So again, we're gonna carry that, we're gonna preserve their notices and send it to January eleventh, uh, in case anybody's out there in the public looking for this. Similarly, case, uh, sixteen, Z twenty-one dash zero seven four. That's two thirty-eight dash two forty-seventh street. That was also carried from November ninth with a preservation of notice. And we're gonna carry that again with a preservation of notice to January eleventh. And that leaves us with, uh, case seventeen, Z twenty-two dash zero seven seven. And that is one oh four Glenwood. And again, that's, uh, that was carried from November ninth. And with, with tonight, with a preservation of notice, and again, we're gonna carry that with a preservation of notice to January eleventh. So that, that takes care of at least the agenda. And now we have, uh, some.
Well, January eleven would be a very busy day. Oh, busy night, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but we, we, we like to be busy, it keeps us out of trouble. So we have, uh, three, uh, resolutions to memorialize and then two board contracts, but let's get finished with the resolutions. The first is Z twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one four. It's the Inn at Garfield LLC, the address was two 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 dash two two four Garfield Avenue. It was an application for site plan amendment approval with a C variance. That was heard October nineteenth. Present on October nineteenth were Chairperson Coyle, Commissioners Shadid, Boyle, Silva, Park and Allen. That passed five in favor, one opposed, the one opposed was Chairperson Coyle. So all in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And the next one was, uh, a case, uh, Z twenty-two dash zero five eight, it was in the matter of eighty-four dash eighty-eight Beacon Development LLC. That was heard October twenty-sixth. That was an application for preliminary and final mi- minors, uh, excuse me, major site plan approval with a use variance, bulk variance and design waiver exception approval. Present on October twenty-sixth were Acting Chair, uh, Arroyo and Commissioners Allen, Zablisk, Zabluky, Shadid, Brown, Patel and Boyle, and I, let me count that again. Uh, that's seven commissioners, and that was passed, seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last resolution was heard on, uh, December ninth, that application was Z twenty-three dash zero two five in the matter of Arabito Roman, or Raymond. That was an application for bulk variance and design waivers. Present on November ninth were, uh, Acting Chair Arroyo and Commissioners Allen, Zabluky, Shadid, Park and Boyle. That passed six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that, it's, aye?
Aye, aye.
Okay, now we have, uh, two contracts and, uh, two, uh, resolutions for approval. The first is for Bridget's contract for, uh, stenographic services for the zoning board. I don't know if we wanna have any discussion of it, but we just it's hers contract that we approve every year.
I think we should just take a vote, is that what you?
Yes, so there's the agreement for stenographic services, which is, uh, the same thing, uh, every year, and there's the resolution to approve that. So we'll start with the agreement, um, it's her standard contract, um. I think that, uh, our resolution is gonna authorize uh, the Chairperson, myself, Francisco is the Secretary of the Board, and Bridget to sign that, so all in favor of that agreement?
Aye.
Anybody opposed that?
Aye, aye.
Same with the resolution, uh, authorizing us to adopt this contract. Good to go, everybody.
Good to go.
Good, okay. And the next is the more controversial one, that's, uh, my contract.
We need discussion, Vinnie, uh, about this.
Close doors. Close doors.
Executive session.
Yeah, it's a me out to pasture. Anyway, it's the same contract, uh, I think, for the last twenty years. It's uh, uh, the agreement for services hasn't changed in terms of the fee. And the resolution adopting that. So is there any problem with it?
No.
Have I anybody? I'm sorry.
So do I say all in favor? Aye.
I will have a Christmas party this year.
Hi, it's up to you guys.
We talked about that.
All in favor, aye.
Aye. Uh, that's for, that's for the Christmas party or what?
We 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 kind of suspended those parties because of COVID. But we could talk about it next year. We don't have to do, it's always tough to do it around December, but. We wanted to get together in January, that I'm all in favor of that.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Okay.
We talk, think about it, and I'll send a email out and figure out a date in January. That'd be great.
Great, okay.
Hopefully, there's some new members on the board by then, too.
That would be a nice idea because.
Cutting it close, yeah.
Because.
Yeah, the eleven, the eleven.
A hundred is is not good, right? About a thousand percent.
Yeah, right now, the eleventh, I'm, right now, I'm good, but it may change by the end of the month, so.
That's always gonna be tough.
But I won't know that till then, so until it's all good.
We talked about getting new commissioners, but would be nice to have a little cushion.
Yeah.
Some cushion, right?
Okay.
So uh with that said, if we have no other business, I guess we could.
I just have one question. Who do I have to send an email to about my li- about my um license plate?
Sheila, so respond to the email that she sent. I can, I can read it to you tomorrow.
Cause of course I don't know. I have to go look at my car, cause I have no idea. Okay.
Okay, so if we have no other business, um.
Look at your registration. You you got the license number on it.
That's in the car.
I think you're, I think you're just asking for the make and model.
I think for the license plate too.
A license plate too.
I know the make and model.
Make and model is easy. It's the license plate that you don't forget.
It's always nice to have.
Maybe we should close the public. Do you want to close the meeting so this Bridget doesn't have to take all this down?
Right, let's close the public portion of the meeting, and let's take uh, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
So Francisco, just uh close it off, and let's get to like when there's only ten of us on.